Let's go ahead and start the board meeting today. Okay, first up, call the order, and we're going to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up is C, approval of agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Comments from the public. Mr. Gardner, I'll ask you to do that one.
Okay, again, as usual, the entire text for public comments is provided to the board and is submitted for the public record in the packet. We have one public comment. The summary, it is feedback from one citizen on the South Albany presentation, which occurred at the last meeting, for multiple options to consider for how high schools are attended within the district. And again, the text is available in the packet.
Okay, next up is Board Business, E1. We're going to certify the election results.
Mr. Chair, I move to certify elections results as presented.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, next up is E2, public complaint. Brad, you have this.
Okay, thank you. I spoke with the investigator today. We're still, this investigation is the allegations that Chairman Pete Morris had made a phone call to someone's workplace and made a complaint. We are still waiting on information from the other side to corroborate what the information we have, and we've been unable to get that information at this time. We're hopeful at the next meeting we'll be able to bring a conclusion to the matter. That's it.
Okay. F, superintendent's comments. Mr. Gardner.
First order of business is to welcome our new Director of Equity, Diversity and Inclusion to the table tonight. Kelsey Castalas, and we're very happy and glad that she is here to assume these duties and really look forward to the work as we go forward. There are several elements in the strategic plan that she will be leading us in, and I have been really impressed with her fluid intelligence and her relational ability with people, and just look forward to doing that work with her. Couple of other things, I really want to appreciate the entire staff of this district for the work. There have been two years now since we were completely out of school due to COVID, and there's a lot of work to do coming back, it's hard on people, and I just can't say enough about the commitment of all of the people in this district, classified, certified, the teachers and the administrators, everybody who has made this district function this year as we get better. I just really appreciate all their efforts and hope they have a great summer. I do want to make a couple of comments. We have hired this year for the principalships at North Albany Middle School, at Sunrise Elementary, and at Tequena Central, and I have been really amazed at the quality of people who have applied. I'm not sure I've sat through, we had four different people who were interviewed, I don't think I've sat through that seasoned and experienced a group with demonstrated success in my entire career. I've just been really pleased with the caliber of the principals we've been able to hire. We really are looking forward to them joining the district and engaging, and I think they can help us learn. I'll be coming back to you with goals, probably be iterating them to you here in the month of July, and then, of course, we'll move out and those will be approved in the fall. Really looking forward to that. Finally, budget, and you guys can see that tonight, I think I mentioned in the budget process that this was a checkpoint, and it is a checkpoint, and we are continuing to see and learn, and we know that we've got work to do ahead of us to make it through to next year's budget and get through both of these two years. And so, and we'll, of course, bring you more on that as we move forward. And I want to thank two board members tonight, Michael Thompson and Eric Agunaga, for their service here. I know I've only been here for one of those years. I know that you have served four years in the position, and I want to thank you guys for your efforts on behalf of children and on behalf of the staff. Thank you for your time here with the Greater Albany District.
I'd like to say, being here, you understand it, it's a lot more work than you think, okay? And so, no matter where you fall out on different things, the community willing to serve is amazing, right? We need to have community members willing to serve on all different varieties, to have all different viewpoints, and it's, I appreciate the fact that we have people that are willing to serve, and thank you, both of you, for doing that. Andy, you done? I apologize.
I'm done, yep.
Okay, Board Reports. Michael.
Yeah, I really don't have, I just want to follow up, I guess, on that. I just want to take this, my chance here to thank all the teachers, classified staff, administrators, who patiently answered my questions over the last four years to help me understand this, this organization, how it functions. You know, I tell people, you sort of come to this, you know, perhaps you, you understand your child's building, you know, you're a volunteer there, and you start to realize that there are 21 buildings, 9,000 students with a variety of needs, you know, and so you start to, you start to learn, it's much bigger, it's a much bigger, you only see part of the puzzle. And so I just want to thank everyone who helped me learn these last four years. And let me just, if you can indulge me a second, since it is my last time, you know, looking ahead, I've heard, I've heard in my four years, I've heard boardwork described as informed oversight, and I think that is, after four years, I think that is the best, that kind of rings true to me, that phrase rings true to me. In fact, I'd emphasize the informed part of it. And I just, I could go down the litany of things that I was a part of that I really feel very positive about, looking ahead. You know, the work, without a doubt, the work that followed the Student Success Act of 2019 and all of that, that planning and the decisions we made over that, without a doubt, getting, I can go into detail, but without doubt, that's been the most gratifying part of my time, and I just, that and the strategic plan, which was mentioned, I think, I think it's a roadmap for you all going forward, the strategic plan, I think if you set yourself and follow things that flow with the strategic plan and the three priorities that come from the strategic plan, equitable outcomes, social and emotional supports, and rigorous academics, which I'll say again, all work together, they all work together, and for a year, we've heard the principals come and talk to us how in their building they work on those. And so I would just suggest the board stay in that lane and those type of things along with the budget, and perhaps not get, it'll be easy to get swayed with the latest, you know, culture war fights that come about, and I would stay in that informed oversight role. I think you'll, I think you'll look back, and I think that's the way to give, to work towards the success of all students, which I think that's what we're all here for. So, thank you. Thank you.
Eric.
I'm going to save my speech for the last, but I did actually have the privilege of touring, touring our new bus facility, and it is pretty amazing, and what's more amazing about it is the staff that, or how's there. They are some of the most hardworking people in this district. They really care about kids and making sure that education is happening, and they get the kiddos to education. It is state of the art, and it's only operated because of the employees there are state of the art as well. So, I really appreciate the superintendent and Mr. Bowen setting up the tour for me. Thank you.
Brad.
Oh, thank you. Michael and Eric, thank you both for your tutelage, helping me to understand what it is to be a board member and get me started. It certainly is a lot more work than I anticipated going in, and you helped bridge some of that gap and show me the ways to kind of make it manageable and work, and I do appreciate that, and I wish you both a lot of fun with your new free time, because we seem to give a lot of that up when we, when we're doing this, but it's all for a good cause. And I'd also like to welcome, Sean's in the back room, Sean, I don't think Ryan made it tonight, but welcome new board members, we'll see you at the next board meeting, and be careful what you wish for, because sometimes you get it. Other than that, don't have a whole lot else.
Okay, I'd like to add on to the fact, thank you again to Eric and Michael, a lot of work, a lot of personal sacrifice to do the thing, do the job, and so very much appreciated you willing to give back to the community. Also want to thank all the teachers and staff for, you know, we got through another year, right? Well done, thank you, everybody, for doing that. I think we're getting closer and closer back to the place we need to be to catch up in learning, both from a mental standpoint and academic standpoint and all, all the, all the things that kids kind of lost a little bit during the few years of COVID. Thank you for hanging in there, thank you for showing grace and patience. Also like to talk a little bit about the public complaint that was paced against me. It amazes me that the guy who put the complaint in won't even meet with the investigator. Beth. It's just amazing.
Beth, Beth. I can't wait to share with you, but not now.
Yeah.
Let's keep moving, guys.
Okay. So, anyway. We'll, we'll move on, and the truth will come out, and I'll feel good about that. So, next up.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Licensed.
There are no listings of people on either one, I don't know that we need to address them, and there's nobody to.
Yeah, do we have to vote on it? Nothing?
You're not welcoming anybody in? Presignations are happening, but not at this point.
They don't ask us.
About that, yeah. So I don't believe there's any action to be taken there.
Minutes, regular board meeting, 6:12:23.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve minutes from the regular board meeting from 6:12:23 as presented.
That's second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, old business. Next is reports, middle school behavior work group recommendations. Mr. Gardner.
So, and Stafford, if you want to approach the podium and you want to spend a little bit of time presenting on this, the first thing that I want to talk about is that this, this has been something that has been a concern for staff, board members, and I want to turn the floor over to Stafford at this point. I think both board members who were present for this committee were aware of this, but Stafford was the person who put together the agendas each time, and he did a fantastic job, I think, very thoughtful person, I think you saw that on display, and with that, I'll turn it over to Stafford.
Thank you, directors, for allowing me to share the outcomes of our work group on middle school, regarding middle school behavior.
Mr. Boyd, can you introduce yourself for?
Oh, yes, sorry. I'm Stafford Boyd, I'm a director of secondary schools. Thank you, Eric. So, Andy laid out three purposes for the group to come together, and the first one was to learn and understand kind of what we currently are doing with our policies, particularly as they show up in our student and parent handbooks, and then also looking at how we respond to bias incidents, and of course, with the focus on the middle schools. Second was to learn and understand the philosophy behind all of those, as well as some specific philosophies around restorative practices, Safe and Civil Schools, which is an organization which we are in the second year of a three-year partnership with, again, and how they, how they relate to what is in the handbook and what we're aspiring to do through our strategic plan. And then third was to actually make concrete recommendations for action based upon what we've learned, really focused on the best interest of all students, underserved students, as well as the well-being and safety of staff and students. So, we brought together a diverse, broad group of 25 strong, included board members, Chair Morse and Vice Chair Wilson participated, district administrators, including Superintendent Gardner and myself, members of the leadership of our classified and licensed employee associations, middle school administrators, members of our district behavior team that responds K8 to students that have high support needs for behavior, also included other licensed and classified staff, some parents and community members, understanding that not mutually exclusive across these bullet points, so people were showing up with multiple identities and perspectives, which actually really served, I think, the group. So, our process was, we had four 90-minute meetings over the span of a month, and we engaged in whole group learning around certain topics, which I'll share in a minute. We also engaged in lots of conversation for meetings two through four, we actually split into five smaller teams, truly maximize the amount of conversation and perspectives that could be kind of put into the room, and then we'd go back and forth between those teams and the larger group. We engaged in a lot of team collaboration in those smaller groups, really to make sure we're generating lots of ideas and possibilities, thinking through and prioritizing some recommendations, analyzing those recommendations, and then making sure that we were sharing multiple perspectives, that there, you know, there are multiple, multiple ideas and multiple perspectives on those ideas, and so really trying to surface as much as we could in those four meetings. And then finally, to actually engage in restorative practice. A member from the Center for Dialogue and Resolution, who we've, we're going into our fifth year next year of partnership with them, they're actually based in Eugene, was with us for meetings two through four, and he facilitated some really kind of low-level, basic restorative practice, so we could engage in that as a team. Here are all the, oops, excuse me, let me go back. Here are all the topics that we engaged in whole group learning on. The first was just looking at our current handbooks and looking at the behavior matrices across the four schools, the big aha was, they're not all the same, and that will tie to our recommendations. The second was to get a better, deeper understanding of our multi-tiered systems of support, which are addressed prevalently in our strategic plan, and then also lots of principals this year have shared how they're leveraging those systems to support students across three tiers of support. Then we learned about, a little more about our partnership with Safe and Civil Schools, again, an organization that's providing professional learning and training for us, as well as technical support, and they actually come in and shadow principals for a full day and give them feedback on what they're seeing, so really, it is deep with training, but also implementation support. How behavior and social-emotional learning actually go hand in hand, they're two sides of the same coin, again, social-emotional learning prevalently identified in our strategic plan. We also examined Corvallis', Corvallis School District has a response process to racialized bias incidents, which is four to five years in development, and so we looked at that, again, to see potentially some things we might be able to do differently or better. We also reviewed behavior data, including from this past year and years prior, including referrals, not only numbers of referrals, but types of referrals, bias incidents, and then also this year, we started, we have an assessment system for the social-emotional learning competencies of our students in K, grades K through eight, and so we examined that. And finally, we examined restorative practices, again, that's ID'd in our strategic plan as a strategy. Again, Darren Riley from the Center for Dialogue and Resolution presented that, but then also helped facilitate some processes for us. So, here are recommendations, the actual, actual recommendations are listed on the, from the team members are listed in the column on the right, but they kind of group lump into six themes. So, the first theme was consistent responses to behavior across our middle schools, not only what's in writing and in policy, but also how we're practicing those, how people are practicing those. Also, our cell phone policy was, was identified as one that we can really make sure we're aligning our practices across the middle schools. The second theme was improving our bias incident response processes, and so making sure we continue work in that direction. A third was to continue to build inclusive and safe environments for our students, especially our marginalized students and students of color, to continue, again, to be proactive in building safe and inclusive spaces. The fourth theme was deepening our understanding around restorative practices, policies and beliefs, and really diving deeper into that, not only at the middle school level, but potentially at the district level, K-12. The fifth theme was professional learning. Clearly, some gaps were identified, and we talked about those in how we provide support for, to implement things well, particularly when it comes to consistency and inclusion of all staff, particularly our classified staff. Finally, communication was identified as a theme, not only to staff, but particularly to families, again, that being proactive in communication helps when incidents do occur, and so making sure we're consistent in that general communication, but then also during actual incidents with families and students and staff. The analysis that we did, we actually then also, in our teams, analyzed the recommendations that we were making, and we used kind of two, we analyzed using two lenses. The first was, our district has an equity lens, which really is just a series of questions to ask when making decisions, and particularly those questions just help us more, not think about, but think around decisions and actions that we may take, again, particularly as they may, they may impact marginalized families and students. And then also to think of this as a multi-tiered, multi-yeared approach, so if we, if we thought about doing something well first, and then next, and then over two to four years, to really think about those in terms of what we recommend as priorities. So, we also gathered that feedback, and so Andy and I are holding on to all of that as we kind of shift forward into what's next, to help inform us, and so what, this is what's next, first is to share recommendations, so I've already shared it with middle school administrators, sharing it with you all tonight. We'll share it when we, when we get back after July with our district leadership teams, and then start to filter it down, and then making sure we commit to actions that are, that are, we can viably implement, not only next year, but then we want to viably implement so it sustains itself. One of those actually is the middle school administrators already met last week, created consistency in handbooks, have applied our learning from Safe and Civil Schools, as well as our learning restorative practices, and elementary principals also met next, last week, and there's consistency now K8, and the only difference in the, in the two handbooks, the behavior matrices now are developmental appropriateness for elementary school students and middle school students. So, those are good changes to look for next year, and we'll get into supporting staff, do those well, and communicating those with parents. Next step also after that then is to support, monitor, and update. So, again, we'll do that through our leadership team processes at the, at the district level, but I'm sure you all will probably want me to come back, or Andy to come back and give you some updates next year on how things are going. And then finally, and I think most important, is to continue the conversation with multiple perspectives and actually broaden the table if we can, and probably localize it a little bit at the, at the actual middle schools, so the more we broaden the table with parent voice and student voice, the better we'll get at this. So, that is my report to y'all. Questions?
I just want to thank Stafford for his work. I think that there is a great readiness, and you can see that, very willing group of principals we're meeting already to begin to align. I think one of the big things here is to educate our staff, for us to have an effective response, it's not just the consequence, and we need to make sure that staff are aware that if a child has offended them in their classroom, that they will be a part of the solution for it to be restorative, right? So, you would bring them back together, and you would reinstate. I think you guys heard the, the language there that we wanted the student to re-enter the school as well and be placed back in good standing after a consequence. I think the other thing to iterate there is consequences do not on their own teach, right? And that we know that many of our children would not look at a day off of school as a negative, and so we must then take a pause, reinstate, and really work to make sure that our discipline is around teaching. That's all I have. I'd like to thank Stafford for his great work on this.
Brad, go ahead.
Andy Stafford, thank you so much for doing this. Pete championed this when he first came on the board, I'm going to give him full credit for this, about the issues in behavior and what we're having, and I so thank you for taking a look at this, to diving into it, and for those of you who think, hey, we've solved it, no, but we've started, right? I mean, and we all recognize that we have begun the conversation and begun the journey to try to make behavior less of an issue in our schools, and so I truly appreciate that, and all the staff that put in their time and showed up there, thank you, everyone. I found it illuminating, and then when we discovered the disconnect between the four middle schools and how they were all treating the different incidents, and that they've already come together and aligned that is big, I think it's going to help everyone to be able to work from the same page and to go forward and have consistency across the district. That's just fabulous, thank you.
Michael.
Yeah, no, when I saw this on the agenda and the, and the slides, this is the kind of informed work I was, was talking about, it, the, the bullet points created a lot of questions in my mind, and so as a, just a parent, you know, I'm not going anywhere, I'm still a parent after June 30th, it, I'm excited to learn more too, but just bringing, I think it was about 20-odd people, looked like, on the, who participated, and representing all I could think of as the key stakeholders, and I think that, that's the kind of work I was talking about earlier, this is the kind of work. And I think when you start with that, you have a chance, and it takes time, and it may be difficult, maybe some difficult moments, but you have a chance with that, with the right people and enough people to have something that's lasting and that everyone has buy-in to at the end, and so I just, kudos all around.
I think it was great, first step. I do, do think we're moving in the right direction. I think it's really important for us to have follow-through and come back around and see how everything's working, you know, and, and be willing as that group to share successes and failures, right? Because we all have both in our life, and sometimes you learn the most from your failures, you know? And so, we just want to make it better, we need to make it better, you know? I think what we're thinking about doing is good, I think we're on the right step, that's all we can ask for, right? So, okay, hey, thank you very much, Mr. Stafford.
Thank you, Stafford. Great job.
Okay, bond business looks like none. New business, we have 2023 budget resolution.
Do you have a presentation involved, Jane?
No, I don't. It's exactly what was presented at the budget hearing.
Okay, I move to approve the budget resolution as presented.
Second your motion.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Next up, budget appropriation revision.
So this pertains to the current year, 2223, and it is keeping us within the budget laws of appropriation. The budget was the best guess, and so this just keeps us compliant.
And it looked like to me there was really no money being deducted or added, just moved.
That's correct. And what caused it is just a variety of things. It's not one purchase. It was many different areas.
I move to approve the 202223 budget appropriation revision as presented.
I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up is M3 Nutrition Services Contract Renewal. Mr. Bullen.
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna bring up Scott Lewis. He's our Director of Food Service, and new to us this year. And so since this is my first time through this process, and the next two agenda items, he might be able to answer some of your questions that you might have. But the, the first one is just the contract in general. We provided a little narrative to you, because once again, this is my first time, so I thought maybe the narrative would be helpful to you as it was to me. So the first one is just the food services contract. This, this lengthy contract gets submitted to the state. The state reviews it for its accuracy, and before we bring it to you.
Anyone have any questions?
You know, in the, yeah, in the, in the memo, I don't know if it was this one or the second one, talks about the ultimate price. We're still, even with this price increase, we're still below, I don't know what they call it, the suggested aggregate. What if we just didn't, what if we just kept not, staying below that, I think it was 356. What if we just kept, just kept it at 310, wherever we're at, 320, I don't care remember.
Maybe we can hold that to the next.
Okay, that's part of the second one.
It's part of the second one, and Scott would have a great response for you.
Mr. Chair, I move to amend the contract as presented.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, M4 Meal Pricing Increase. Mr. Bullen.
You're up again.
Well, Scott, so this, this question is one that I asked of Scott and researched quite a bit, too, just understanding what that weighted price was. So we tried to provide an expectation, explanation to you in writing, and then there's a little box up there on the next page that has a further definition to that. So Scott, you wrote your letter to me, so I could share it with the board. Why don't you take a stab at that one?
Sure. Federal government looks at national school lunches across the country. The weighted average is what they, the term they use. Comes out to 356, or rounded up to 360. And to make sure that schools, school districts around the country don't go in the red in their food service, they want to make sure that everyone's on a level playing field. So they take things like the cost of goods, which has gone up everywhere, cost of labor, which has gone up everywhere, and that what's, those are the aggregates that go into that $3.56. If we didn't do that, we would get penalized when we have an audit, which next year will be an audit year, and will already get a mark against us, even going up 10 cents. But we will always be behind. It'll always be an area for the state and federal government to look at us and, and figure where we are. Imagine if you had four hamburger restaurants, and they were all charging $5 each, but there was one that was charging $2.25. They would have a ton of business, but they would be losing money. And eventually, they'd go out of business. And that's what the, the government in its entirety wants to avoid.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, kind of to Eric's question, we, you, how did we arrive at the $2.01? I think that's what we came up with, wasn't it? From 185 to 201?
That was an increase, but that doesn't have to do with the, the weighted average on free meals.
Yeah.
It's on a, on a different area, and that's just the overall price for the free and reduced meals. And that was based on cost of goods, inflation, again, looking at national averages. SEDEXO has 500 school districts around the country, so we have a lot of, a lot of data from around the country to look at to help us, so it's not unbalanced in any one area.
Okay.
So Brad, if I can interject there, so if I understand your correction, your question correctly, so the, the price increase was 201, that was in the contract from the privacy per, previous year, and it's consumer price index.
Okay, CPI increase.
It's a CPI that influences that price, and it was part of last year's contract.
Is, can SEDEXO perform at that level? I mean, it seems to me incredibly inexpensive, but will we be able to get a good quality meal for our students at that?
I believe so, with the things that we, that I discussed last month that we put in place, I believe that we're gonna have a better product in front of our students next year.
Okay. Good. Well done.
Okay, do I, do I hear a motion?
I lost my place. I move to approve meal pricing as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up, future agenda items, we have none.
Well, I've got a couple of comments on future agenda items. We have bargaining going right now with both groups. You will recall here, about a month ago, we did have a crowd outside. We have met at, in one meeting so far with Certified. We meet again on Thursday. We have agreed on an agenda. The first day's discussions were fruitful and went really well. We will meet again with them again Thursday, and then July 12th. These could be ongoing. I think there's an opportunity to clean the contract up a little bit, as well as solve some of the issues.
Okay.
We are also bargaining right now with Classified. We do not have a resolution yet. We will meet again with them on July 11th. I don't believe there's any meeting scheduled beyond that. But there will certainly be if needed.
Classified's the 11th, and Licensed or Certified is the 12th?
Yes. Summertime bargaining.
Okay. Any other?
Yeah, so I, I would just like to thank so many staff members and community members that have stood by me and supported over the last few years. Hundreds of messages from, from folk in our area, and I greatly appreciate that. I feel like we're leaving this table better than it was. There's bright things in the future. We have one of the most, best leaders I've worked with. He's calm and cool, and he is, I would compare him to a crockpot because he's, he's methodically slow, but a very good turn out in the end, so.
All I hear is slow.
And I, and I just appreciate all the gentlemen I've been able to work with and serve on the board. Times have not always been easy, but there has been some excellent, excellent times. Seeing so many students graduate, bilingual has been a really big goal. Watching our transition out of COVID into school has been extremely satisfying, and I just am very hopeful for the future of our students and our staff going forward. Thank you.
Other business? I don't believe we have any.
Just one thing that I forgot.
Okay.
But it's good.
It's good.
And Mr. Bullen might be able to add, but we see ourselves having conducted a very fruitful hiring season for bus drivers at this point.
Oh, that is good news.
That is very good news.
Do you want to add to that, Dave, at all?
We believe we, we're almost fully staffed. I think we have three or four reserve drivers to hire, but she's fairly confident. Now, we still have to get some of those trained and ready to go for the fall, but she's been very pleased with what, what she's been able to accomplish this spring. Some are already trained, coming from other districts.
May I ask the magic? How, how did we find the magic potion to make this happen?
I think it's just advertising, I think additional campaigning, and I think there's a few of them that just were moving to the area and looking for a change.
Y'all talked to Helen about it, but that's really good news. That's awesome. Good.
That's excellent. Less canceled bus routes. That'd be, that'd be great. Okay, any other last-minute items? Okay, I hear a motion?
We need to.
I thought we had to adjourn and then go into executive session. Okay, we're gonna be doing an executive session. Board will go into closed session. ORS 192.6602H to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed after this meeting adjourns. Do I hear a motion?
Move to adjourn this meeting and go into executive session.
Do I hear a second?
Motion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll adjourn.